I call the meeting of June 22, 2011 back into order. And I'm just going to repeat that for Lowell call, Mr. Marchese and Mrs. Carroll will not be with us tonight. All right. Our second item of business is the approval of items by consensus. And Mrs. Benton.
Good evening. There are three items on the agenda this evening. The approval of the minutes of the June 8 regular session, the approval of the minutes of the June 8 executive session not for release, and the transmitting of Treasury warrants.
And I'm thinking Mrs. Carroll's not here, so we can put those two together, Treasury warrants. All right. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 8, 2011, and the executive session meeting minutes of June 8, 2011, not for release. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for the regular session meeting of June 8, 2011, and the executive session meeting minutes of June 8, 2011, which is not for release.
Okay. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve the transmission of Treasury warrant 6811 payroll, and to move the Treasury warrant L 81, 82, 83, 84, R 238, 239, G 430, G 431, and FS 20. Do we have a motion? Mr. Vale, calling on you again.
So I move to move that the committee approve the transmission of Treasury warrant 6811 payroll, as well as L 81, 82, 83, 84, R 238, 239, G 430, 431, and FS 20.
Excellent. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is Assistant Superintendent interview, and I'll hand this over to Superintendent Benton.
I'd like to introduce to you the candidate that we'd like to bring forward for Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Professional Development, Kathleen, known as Kate Burnham. I'd like to invite you up to that table. Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you.
And maybe we could start out with you just giving a brief overview of what you've been up to, and then the committee will have a few questions.
Could I just interrupt a second? Do you think we should introduce the committee first?
Good idea.
Because they haven't met.
Sure.
So can we? I'd like to introduce the committee to you first, so you feel like you know us a little bit. So we'll start with Mr. Hayes and just go around the table.
Robert Hayes, Secretary, and this is my second year on the board.
Leslie Quick, fourth year on the board, and I'm Vice Chair.
Jenny Bonish, this is my first year on the board.
My name is Quincy Vale, and this is my third year on the board.
So we have a variety, and we've already met, so.
That's right.
So, thank you.
Thank you all. It's very nice to meet you all. A little bit about me and where I've been. I'm a third-generation public school educator, so I guess I've been in education for a very long time now, since I was very young. My career started in the classroom, middle school, and then progressed to high school. I spent a number of years at the high school level teaching science, my first passion. But it wasn't too long into my career in teaching that a new passion took over for me, and that's the love of teaching. It's an art form, I think, and I've learned a lot from colleagues and from my students as well about how to be a good teacher. My passion for good teaching took me down an avenue of becoming a cooperating practitioner for student teachers, became a mentor teacher for new teachers, I became a facilitator for mentors, and eventually became a coordinator for a district-wide mentoring program. That avenue led to a more recent role for me as an instructional specialist in curriculum. In that regard, I worked as a teacher coach, worked with department chairs developing new curriculum and assessments. It was a fantastic experience, which led me into my most current role as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment in Tinsborough. It's kind of been a natural progression, I guess. Maybe about five, six years ago, I got my license as a principal. I remember distinctly being in a class for that licensure, and we had to introduce ourselves. And I was the only member of that cohort that was a high school teacher. And when we got to my introduction, as with all of the rest of the cohort members, the instructor said, "So you want to be a principal?" And I said, "I'm not sure that I do." And he said, "Well, the knitting class is down the hall." But at the high school level, there were so many more avenues for administration than a principal's position. And I think even then I knew that my passion was in curriculum and instruction. So I'm very happy to have made it to this point in my career with this opportunity in Wilmington. It's a fantastic opportunity for me.
Normally, we start on this side, alphabetically, go this way, but I'm going to surprise Quincy, he's always last. So, Mr. Vale, we'll let you choose which question you'd like.
Well, I'm going to go off the reservation. I'd like to know, how would you work with principals and staff and students to come up with and create programs specifically for talented and gifted students?
That's a really good question. I think there's an awful lot of opportunity moving forward in terms of technology. I think that there's a wide array of opportunities out there. One vendor I had worked with recently with virtual high school and venues similar to virtual high school, students can have opportunities really that are limitless. And that goes, you know, kindergarten, pre-K, all the way through grade 12 and beyond. I think that if Wilmington were to be set up in such a way that the infrastructure could support something like that, that's a fantastic opportunity. That could also be budget-conscious, I guess. You wouldn't necessarily have to bring on board additional staff to expand your programming. In terms of working with stakeholders, I think it's very important, and it's important to me. It's my preferred modality. I like to work collaboratively. I like to listen to what other people have to say. People come to the table with a lot of experience from different perspectives, and I think it's important that everybody brings something from their own perspective to the table and can be heard, and I think that that's where really good ideas come from. I don't think that any one person creates all of the best ideas. I really do believe that it comes from collegial discussion and collaboration. So that would be an approach for me.
Thank you. We'll do a second round if you need one more. Unless you have a follow-up to that topic?
Well, related, I guess, experientially, in the different school districts that you've taught in and been involved in, and I know there's a few, do you think they've done a good job or a lousy job of supporting talented and gifted students? And what would you have changed, and why, if you could?
I think that the budgets for the last several years for many, many districts have been a very big challenge. And unfortunately, I think all too often, the programming for talented and gifted is one of the very first things that gets cut. So I guess, to that end, I would say that where you find obstacles, such as funding, you have to continue to pursue all types of opportunities. I guess you could say that you do whatever it takes, and you just keep looking so that you can continue to support the priorities that are important to you.
As a grant writer, have you had success in raising monies for funds relating to programs such as that?
The grants that I was involved in writing were the state grants, Title I, Title II, the Literacy Partnership Grant. The more competitive grants in the districts that I've been involved in have been more teacher-driven, teachers pursuing the grants. To that end, my experience with any of those types of things were not, they weren't specifically targeted to supporting talented and gifted programming. More often than not, those grants that I was involved in really went more toward incorporating technology in the classroom, supporting the curriculum in that regard for all students, not specifically for talented and gifted. But I think that it speaks to a commitment to raising the bar for all students. So, no, I don't have any specific experience with pursuing grants for talented and gifted. But again, it's a matter of setting priorities, and if that becomes a priority, then that's what the focus is, and you go and you find what you need to find.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonish?
I'm going to ask one of these. Please describe your experiences, if any, in developing long-range strategic plans for school districts.
I had some experience in terms of long-range plans for the mentoring program when I was in Chelmsford. We would collect data from a variety of means, and based on the feedback that we were getting through that data, we made decisions for changing the program as needed to fit the needs of the community. Long-range plans, for me more recently, I worked with the Technology Director in Tinsborough as he was putting together his technology plan moving forward for a three- to five-year window. So in terms of curriculum development, I haven't had an opportunity professionally yet to work on strategic long plans, long-plan goals for curriculum or instruction. But basically, I think that the model is pretty much the same. You have to rely on the data that you have available. And again, I think it's important that there be collaboration around determining those goals. People come to the table with a variety of perspectives and experience, and I think it's smart to take that all in as you look forward and start planning.
Thank you. Dr. Quick?
Good evening. My question is, a key component of this position is curriculum development, which from your resume seems to be an expertise of yours. Describe a process you use to implement or modify curriculum components utilized by your school system, and how you accumulated and analyzed data to base these changes.
Oh, that's a big question. So many answers. So many answers. I would speak to the development of a common assessment, a departmental assessment, in a variety of forms, whether that be in the form of a final exam, let's say, whereby all of the teachers teaching that course plotted their data, their student scores, and then we would take a look at the trends that way and make a shift in the assessment based on the data that we were getting in terms of an entire class, let's say, all sophomores taking grade 10 biology, college prep level, let's say. So taking a look at data to inform what we needed to do to improve the assessment tool that we were using. I could speak to the fact that we also worked to develop a departmental rubric for scientific writing. And in that regard, teachers in a variety of disciplines in science used a rubric that was developed by a team representative of the department. Then, after a period of time using that newly-developed tool, we got together and collected some data in terms of feedback, really specifically from the teachers who had the experience of using that, and in order to meet their needs, making adjustments accordingly. In terms of moving from a model of a traditional assessment, I have experience with development of performance assessments that were standards-based. That was a really wonderful experience for me professionally. It was a shift in how we were thinking about assessing and different modalities really for teaching and assessing. But the thing that stands out to me in terms of working collaboratively to modify and change the course of what we're doing came, I'd say, maybe about seven or eight years ago. I had the opportunity to be trained as a facilitator in the use of protocols as we were developing a professional learning community model in Chelmsford. It was really powerful to sit around the table with colleagues and present assignments that we had given as teachers, along with student work samples, and use that protocol to have collegial discussion around what we saw with that work sample and the assignment that was given. And the feedback that comes from something like that, when teachers are open to receiving that feedback, is extremely powerful. Teachers often say that they don't have enough time to talk with each other about what matters, what they do every day, teaching. So to begin that kind of work and have that experience in a structured way was a fantastic model, not only for the students that benefited from the work, but it really was a very powerful form of professional development for all of the teachers involved, not just the presenting teacher in that group. I think that it's a really powerful model to move forward with in terms of a different avenue of data collection, not relying solely on numbers from specific types of assessment. If it's done right, it can be very, very, very powerful. I've seen it done very well, and I've seen it done not so well. So I take the experience of both a successful rollout of initiative like this and a not-so-successful rollout of the same initiative to this particular role, I think.
Can you do a second part?
Yes. And the second part of my question is, given what you just discussed, what do you see as the school committee's involvement in this process?
In the process of curriculum development? I think that, again, people come to the discussion with a variety of perspectives. I think it's wise for somebody in a position like this one to be able to listen to all the voices that come to the table and bring something to the discussion. I think that, again, decisions made in collaboration with colleagues and all stakeholders is really the best way to move forward. I don't really embrace the top-down model. I really don't. I think that for lasting change, it really does have to be collaborative, and everybody has to be represented.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you very much. Very nice to meet you. Just a comment first. One thing that shines through from your resume and your application is your work ethic. That's something I look for when interviewing someone. Clearly, your references speak to your work ethic. Your 4.0 GPAs speak to your work ethic. And I didn't give it, I gave it minor consideration, but the fact that you were a PTO president, that takes work ethic as well. So I guess my question involves professional development, something that you have a lot of experience in, clearly, in Chelmsford Lowell and Tinsborough. Just briefly, in Tinsborough, this year you've been creating and facilitating professional development opportunities for staff district-wide. You update the district website with professional development resources and opportunities. You author a professional newsletter for staff. So I guess my question is, sort of, what is your approach to professional developments, and how can we continue to support the professional development needs of our staff with a limited budget?
Well, there are a lot of opportunities, I think, in terms of a limited budget. I can't speak to that too specifically, because I don't know what the needs are. But I would say that I approach it on two levels. One would be a district-wide level, to determine what the needs are in terms of the community as a whole moving forward in a unified way. That's one level. But the other thing that's very important to me is that teachers are seen as individuals. They all bring to their professional lives a certain passion. There was something that drove them to this profession. Sometimes teachers have that passion, and you need to find new avenues for them to continue to grow along those lines. So that's one thing. Recognizing when teachers have maybe hit a spot in their career where things have sort of slowed down a bit, and they need to be re-energized, a spark needs to be renewed for them, I think that professional development comes in to play there as well. I think the key here for me, in this particular position, as with my position in Tinsborough, is to know the staff as individuals, in addition to knowing as a building-based community or a district-wide community. I think that's how you make the best decisions about moving forward with what types of professional development are needed at all of those levels. In terms of being creative in finance for PD, again, I think that there are a lot of opportunities for teachers to get together in a structured way, to collaborate, whether that's around data that we're looking at, or whether we move to a new model where we're looking at anecdotal data or experiential data. Those types of things don't really need to cost much money at all. I think another thing that helps to keep teachers energized around what's current in education really is to get out and visit other districts. And that costs minimal money, really. You might even be able to be a little bit creative in terms of coverage of classrooms and not have to put much funding behind that at all. But I think when teachers get together in groups, they go and they visit another district, walk through classrooms, they see things, they're going to talk about things, they will come up with new ideas that they want to pursue in terms of professional development. They may gain some perspective on things that they're doing using a similar curriculum, let's say, but see another district take a different approach to that same curriculum. So I think that that's a valuable resource. I think that teachers having the opportunity to, again, in small teams, go and visit and do walkthroughs in district, in another building. And it doesn't even need to be in the same grade level, really, because there are some there are some commonalities regardless of the grade that the teacher is working with. Good teaching is good teaching. And I think that, for me, anytime I'm with other colleagues, I see things and I think, "Oh, if I were in the classroom, I would love to try that," or, you know, "do something different based on something that I had seen." So I think that there, again, it's a multi-layered approach, lots of ways that you can be creative about that without expending a lot of funds. But again, for me, it comes back to knowing the individuals in the district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We had a very thorough interview originally, but I just said one thing I wanted you to share with us, the Student Curriculum Council.
Oh, okay.
Would you mind telling us about that?
That was something new that I started in Tinsborough this year. When I was in the classroom as a teacher, I sought the feedback of my students frequently. I believed that they can teach me how to be a better teacher. When you hear the same sort of feedback across classes coming in your direction, there's some sort of, you know, foundation for that. There's a little bit of validity to things if you're seeing it as a pattern across classes. So I always valued the feedback of my own students for my own teaching. And that voice, the student voice, is something that's important to me. And being away from my own classroom with my own students, I really crave that voice. I like to hear from students. So I started a Student Curriculum Advisory Council. Basically, what it was really was, it wasn't a standing committee of students that were representing their school. It was a focus group by grade level. I had the opportunity to meet with and discuss their perspectives, the junior class, the senior class, and the sixth-grade class. In Tinsborough, the elementary school goes through grade five, so the transition from elementary to middle school happens from five to six. So that conversation actually was the most valuable to me in terms of how to ease that transition year, not only for students but for parents as well. But they really do, they give you a lot of really valuable information if you take the time to ask. And I enjoy listening to what they have to say.
That sounds terrific. Thank you. I think what we'll do now is, if anyone has any other question they'd like to ask, okay, we'll do Robert first, and then Quincy.
Sure. Just one more question. How would you work with the Special Education Administrator to ensure equity in and access to the instructional program for students with special needs?
I think that it's very important for me in this position to have a really solid working relationship, not only with the Special Ed Director, but the Director of Technology, Administrator for Business and Finance.
Seems very difficult.
Again, it comes back to that collaborative effort. We all have different expertise that we bring to the discussion, but we all want the same outcome, the best education for the students who come to our community. I think it's important that a divide not exist between Special Ed and General Ed. And I think that there's some work to be done typically, and again, not knowing the district well enough, I can't say that it exists here. But I think all too often, you know, there is that divide. And I think that it's important that the collaboration break down that divide, because, again, good teaching is good teaching. The types of things- again, good teaching is good teaching. The types of things that one would consider good practice in terms of working with children with learning disabilities is really good teaching practice all around. So, I think, again, to come back to your earlier question around professional development, teachers in, in special ed that have training with delivering curriculum in a, in a certain way, different instructional strategies or approaches to diverse learners, really, could, could share that expertise with all teachers. So, again, that collaboration is very, very important, that we approach things with the same goal in mind. But that's how I feel about that. And again, it would go beyond collaboration with specifically the special ed director.
Thank you. One quick follow-up regarding professional development?
[laughing]
Okay, real quick, I'm sorry. This will, this will put it over the top for me, though. As a public librarian, I had heard that you collaborated with the public library in Tingsborough regarding professional development. Can you talk a little bit about that, real quick?
Absolutely. I had a meeting with the librarians at the public library. I also had a meeting with our, we have a very small district in Tingsborough, one librarian in the district. There was a need for a professional library. None of the buildings had a professional library with resources for teachers. That's important to me. I know how important it was to me when I was a teacher pursuing a master's degree or a CAGS degree, to have access to some resources that you didn't have to buy. But I think that it also, having, having access to those resources facilitates some really good discussion amongst colleagues. So, it was important to me that, that the teachers in Tingsborough have access to that type of material. So, I worked with the librarian in the district to establish a faculty section of the library at the high school, figuring that that would be a good place to start. The high school's getting ready. They're, they're entering their self-study for their accreditation. So, it will be important for them in that regard. But I also met with the, the librarians at the public library and shared with them what was going on in the district in terms of the new Common Core coming in, and how the, the library could support teachers around that new initiative with realigning the curriculum. And I, and I told them of my, my strong desire to, to build a support in terms of a professional library for the, for the staff. And they agreed that it was an important endeavor, and they agreed that they would put some of their funding toward that initiative as well. And I worked with the technology director so that we can set it up in a way that, using our own library data system, all of the books that are going to become part of the library at the high school are all being entered into a catalog. And we're going to link with the public library so that teachers can get into our database and see what resources are available in district at the high school, but they can also see what resources are available to them at the public library as well.
That's great.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty happy with that.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Veale.
A few more questions for you, if I can. I know you talk about being a collaborative person, which I appreciate very much. I do a lot of it myself. I'm just curious about your working style, and how you actually, when you're working collaboratively, how you go about building support for, for changes to programs, or whole new ways of doing things? And specifically, what kinds of techniques and strategies and tools do you use when working with a large group to, to move, to move forward and to, to get things done?
I think that the, the secret to success with that is making the large group, small group initially. Different things that I did this year to that end, in each of the buildings, I held open office hours for an entire day, so that teachers, at different times of the day, when they had their prep time, could drop in. And it was an open forum. It was not, there was no predetermined agenda. I did not have specific information that I was seeking. It was truly, what I called it, open office, so that they could come to me and share with me what they found to be concerns or areas of need. I also met with groups of teachers in, in a small setting, whether that be grade-level teams or department groupings at the high school or the middle school level, again, to, to listen to, to what they had to say. If a new initiative was implemented, oftentimes, teachers need to have a forum where they can give some feedback, or ask questions about why certain things have to be a certain way. And I think that either of those two forums works well for that. But I also set up meetings strategically. I, I put out an open invitation by grade level for teachers to make appointments with me for one-on-one discussion time. Again, that comes back to what I was talking about earlier as well. It's, it's a need for me to get to know them as individuals, to know what, what their passions are, what their concerns are, what their experience has been. Sometimes when teachers are frustrated with, with a lack of opportunity, or a lack of support, or a perceived lack of support, having that forum to, to share their feelings on that, that gives me an opportunity now to do something about it. In terms of the small groups and, and working collaboratively to gain information or develop relationships, I think that it's also important to work with parent groups as well. I had several meetings with representatives from the Educational Foundation of Tingsborough through the course of the year, with communication via email as well. So, I think, again, it, it's a matter of being open, communicating the fact that you are open, and, and encouraging that communication to come your way is important. I think it's important to listen. And I think it's important to take that information and follow up. It's, it's one thing if you're going to be open and you listen, and that's, that's great. But if you don't do anything with what you gather for information, then it's really rather pointless. So, I think it's important to, to have follow-up with, with any of the groups or individuals that you meet with.
One more question?
Well, I mean, it's sort of, it, it sort of builds on, on that. And the comment is that in your role as a, if you were to get it, as a assistant superintendent, and you sort of addressed it a little bit, your constituency is broader than just sort of inward, right?
Right.
You're not going to be only working with, with teachers or curriculum development because you've, and, and as a district, we're, we're working on a number of large endeavors which are going to require a much broader sales job to build community support. And amongst a lot of different community boards, we have a new high school project, and we have initiatives for a 21st century classroom. So, you addressed it a little bit. I mean, maybe I'll point out one thing. I think that our former assistant superintendent had picked up a, a ball and was starting to spearhead, spearhead an effort to introduce and to experiment with open-source textbooks. And I think that might be a task that I'd like to see, if you would pick up on, and how you would go about sort of building support for further inclusion of open-source textbooks into the curriculum and development of them as they, as they come online. And part and parcel of, of my thinking with some of this, and it's been expressed in some of the strategic plans, is further developing partnerships with, like, the business community.
Mm-hmm.
And forming a closer and deeper relationship, whether it's through externships, or internships, or cooperative arrangements, or something else. And so, these are constituency, constituencies above and beyond sort of the, the school. It's the wider community, whether it's the, you know, the, the, the Board of Selectmen, and the public boards, or the superintendents, the citizens, or the business community. So, I'm wondering what your thoughts about those, that type of a role for you in a new community like Wilmington, and how you're going to go about supporting the superintendent and working collaboratively with much larger groups to build wider support for more systemic kind of changes, not really incremental change?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if you're getting really beyond the scope, only because she'd be doing, the superintendent would be guiding where she's going, and whether the superintendent agrees with everything you just covered. But the superintendent would like you to, feels like you could answer that question anyway.
I think it's the same type of approach that I took with the library partnership, or attending different meetings with the Educational Foundation of Tingsborough, that, that type of thing. Obviously, you'd have to branch out, you have to start somewhere. But I think that the model and the approach is the same. I think in terms of welcoming or inviting feedback from a wider constituency, I think, again, coming back to the technology used through the website would be a good avenue for that. But yes, outreach to, to a wider audience is, is very important. It is important. If we're going to be successful, it's a whole community effort, all the members of the community, not just the school community. But again, I think the key there is, is for me to be open, and to reach out and, and open some dialogue with, with those people that we want to build partnerships with. In Tingsborough, for instance, I had some outreach to the University of Massachusetts Lowell in terms of building a partnership around our math curriculum. We had graduate students come in and work with students that were identified as having some additional need in the area of math. That was the beginning of a partnership. It needs to expand beyond the initial stages, but when it's successful in a small way, then you can build on that. There's somewhere to go. But, but yeah, I have, I have no problem taking direction and going in whatever direction is decided.
Thank you.
We have a school business partnership committee that you would serve on. And one of the things that I think Quincy was getting at, and I totally agree, and we have some great expertise within the community, with Textron, Analog, and we need to get them more involved in the schools. ITT just opened up a new facility that is basically empty during the day, and the facility is incredible. And we should be finding a way to get our high school students who are interested in some of the technologies they have over there. So, that, that's a piece. The foundation is another example of a board that the assistant superintendent sits on. The chamber in Wilmington has been reinvigorated, and that's a source of, we need to get them more involved, the schools.
Those all sound like great avenues, and things that would be exciting to me to pursue. So, I look forward to that.
That's great. We'll just have one more question, Dr. Quick, and then that'll be the end for you.
Okay.
You've been so good and patient. Thank you.
All right, last one. You're almost there. If you become a successful candidate, can you describe what, just even if it's just one example, something that's brewing in your head, is a new position, something that you would like to achieve by the end of the first year?
I think, for me, for my own passion, as we discussed earlier, I'd like to discuss the opportunity to pursue that student advisory curriculum council. That, that would be important to me. But really, any of the things that, that I've experienced this year in, in Tingsborough in my current role, I would love to pursue collaboration with, you know, the public library, for instance.
Well, I'm hoping to that the first month.
Really. I, I think that there really needs to be more collaboration around that. I think, you know, things, things have changed in the way that students go get their information. But really, the library, isn't that the heart and soul of, of knowledge? I, I really, I, I-
All right, you got my vote.
[laughing]
Next question.
Really. I, I think that it's really important. So, that would be something that, that I would be excited to pursue here as well. But again, in terms of, of setting a, a goal for, you know, what I would accomplish in the first year, I really feel that I, I really need to get in and know the needs of, of this particular learning community in order to set goals that are appropriate for this community. And I don't think I have a good sense of that yet, but I think it won't take long before I, I do get that sense. And I will be ambitious, I guess you could say, as I was with my goals in Tingsborough as well. Superintendent used to say to me, "But you're just one person." So, I don't usually set goals for things that I don't think I can attain, so.
Excellent way to end. Thank you. Great questions, everybody. Thank you so much. And I'll let Mrs. Benton close up for us.
Thanks, Kate. Mr. Righer is going to-
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And have this discussion with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Watch the court.
Lose a beautiful year. Excellent. Now, are you going to make recommendations?
I'm going to make recommendations when they call the ball.
Yeah. We're wait, just waiting for a moment. The superintendent's going to make a recommendation for us, and we'll discuss it in a moment to then, we'll have a vote.
Glad you got to meet Kate Byrne. I'm, I'm hoping that you got a taste of what we saw in the interview, and what came through loudly and clearly in the reference checks that I did. She's bright, articulate, has a depth of experience with curriculum instruction and assessment. I think what comes through passionately is her love of learning and her wanting to be involved with students, which really excited me. I wish you could see an example of the newsletter, that professional newsletter she does for the staff, quite impressive. But I'd like to recommend Kathleen Byrne as the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction.
Now, how this works is that the superintendent recommends, but it is our, it is our hiring. So, we would have to have a majority of the vote to hire her. So, I would entertain a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation of Kate Byrne as the assistant superintendent.
Motion to support the superintendent's recommendation for Kate Byrne for assistant superintendent.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. Hayes? Questions, comments, or anyone have anything they'd like to say about it?
Yes. I just wanted to comment, just, I thought that, you know, going through her CV, her curriculum vitae, I thought that it was a lot of, a lot of experience in the curriculum development area. I think that's really important. I thought she was articulate. Not that this is what makes or breaks an assistant superintendent. However, her answers were thoughtful, you know, articulate, and I believe that her experience makes her a wonderful candidate.
Thank you. Anything else?
She's a real go-getter, too.
Yes.
You know, with all the experience, and she seems excited about, you know, doing some things here, too, so.
I have to tell you, in the original interview, I left there beyond impressed, and I didn't think she could do even better than that interview. But tonight, her interview was absolutely outstanding. She really, and I like that she takes time to think before she answers, and she doesn't commit. And she told us a couple of things. she answers, and she doesn't commit. And she told us a couple of things, I think, in the beginning, when she said, "This is how I feel about it," I think she knew she was taking a chance of expressing an opinion that may or may not, she doesn't know us as a community, that may or may not be looked upon as a good opinion here, but she still told us how she felt, her honest truth. So I think that was, I was very impressed with her. So any more questions? Right, all those in favor of hiring Ms. Byrne? Unanimous?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's going to be a wonderful addition to the system.
Oh, absolutely. I think so. She'll look good sitting right over there in the special seat. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is all business, the approval of the middle school handbook.
Just call your attention that there really weren't too many changes, just updated lunch price and the addition of the leadership council description and dismissal procedures. And a couple of typos were corrected.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the middle school handbook. Yes, Mr. Hayes?
I make a motion that we approve the middle school handbook.
Should we say for 2011, 2012?
For 2011, 2012.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Dr. Quick. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda? Our next item of all business, the approval of the high school handbook.
Recommending that you approve the high school handbook with the exception of removing the updated electronic device expectation because that has to do with the school committee policy. The subcommittee has met. We have a draft policy that we'd like to put online and solicit input from the community over the summer. So we will bring that back on August 31st to you. So your vote, approval of the handbook will be with the old language in it.
Okay. Without page 27, updated.
Correct.
All right, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Vale?
Move that we approve the high school handbook as presented, with the exception of the electronic device policy to be brought back at a later time.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Hayes?
For 2011 to 2012.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. New business, FY11 current financial report. Superintendent Benton?
You have before you a current financial report for fiscal 11. I know that there's a big balance, and I want to explain why. We are, if you recall, we have the ARR-A grants that we carried forward, and we are, that money has to be spent down or it goes back. So we have used all of those funds, or will have used all those funds by June 30th, and then we still have other district tuition bills to pay. So we will bring forward a final end-of-the-year report in September.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the financial report? Okay, all the changes are on the front page there.
Yes, always. Mr. Ruggiero is always willing to answer questions at any point.
I don't have any questions, but just publicly thank Mr. Ruggiero for answering my questions this morning.
Okay. Number two is the literary specialist for primary schools.
Back in December, I, we had proposed this position for the Shawshin and Reuben Street School to share it. And as we went through the budget process, we had eliminated it because we didn't think we had the funding. You recall, again, with the ARR-A grants, we were able to create an elementary technology specialist position, and the whole purpose behind the ARR-A grants was to build capacity within the school district, not to create positions that would have to carry on forever. So we had advertised, and Lisa Ippolito came out of the classroom to do the work for two years. We advertised it to see if anybody, at least if it wanted to go back to the classroom, and that's a good thing. Advertised the job again and had no applicants, which to me, I believe tells me that, and we talked to a few teachers, including, we talked to a few teachers, invited a few teachers to think about it, and basically what we found out is that I believe Lisa did the job well because the whole purpose was to get classroom teachers comfortable with technologies, and people are using the technologies within the classroom, so we don't need to fund that position next year. So I would really like to bring back the literacy coach position for the Reuben Street and Shawshin. As you recall, we are, and this is not the only measurement, but our MCAS scores, we had some issues with, and with basically a much younger staff, I think that they need much more support in the classroom. This position would be to really coach teachers around teaching of literacy. So I entertain a...
I'll entertain a motion to approve the literary specialist position for, should we just say for the primary schools? For the primary schools. Do we have a motion? Mr. Hayes?
I make a motion to transfer funds from the elementary technology specialists to a new position of literacy specialists to be shared between Shawshin and Reuben Street Schools.
Did I not have it?
It's on the memorandum.
Oh, I just found it here. That's good. Boy, is he impressive. I found it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Do we have a second? Second, Dr. Quick. Hey, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda?
Thank you.
All right, welcome. Do we have any public comments? No? Okay. Under other reports, we're going to, we had a negotiation, and we're going to have Mr. Hayes explain to us under other reports of this negotiation.
School committee member Quincy Vale and I met recently with Superintendent Benton to discuss her FY12 raise, and the school committee had given us a, come to a consensus in terms of a range, and Mr. Vale and I had, again, met with Superintendent Benton, and we've come to terms. And so I'd like to make a motion that we give Superintendent Benton a 4% raise for FY12.
And we want to report that, do we have a second for that? Wait a second. Okay, Mr. Vale, and then we'll just go, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnich?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kane, yes?
This needs to be a roll call vote? I'm just asking. In the open session?
No. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda?
Thank you.
I just want to make sure it works.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the hard work that you do, Mrs. Benton, and how much you do, and single-handedly. And I think I'm very excited tonight because you're going to have a helper, and I think you're going to have an excellent helper. But you've been doing this for well over a year, and it's just incredible what you have accomplished, and we're very appreciative of it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Correspondence? Oh, excuse me. Are there any other reports? I don't think anyone else has met, no. Okay, sorry, correspondence?
None tonight.
All right. Yes?
I'll just, I mean, I think it was mentioned before, but just officially for the record, we did have a policy committee meeting that both Mr. Hayes and I and Superintendent Benton attended a week or so ago, and we took up the matter of the electronic device policy, and we determined to solicit public input from the community as to what's going to make sense. So we'll be doing that research over the summer, and we'll meet again at some point and bring that back to the committee.
I'm just wondering how people are going to know to go on the...
Alert Now.
Oh, you are going to do that?
We'll do it right now.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
People know to look for that most of the time.
Sounds good. Dr. Quick, I do have a question with that.
For the Alert Now, then, is it going to be which parents you're soliciting, all parents, parents turn grades, all?
I think it's important to open up to the community. But we will also, the way we do the Survey Monkey, we'll have them identify what grades the children are.
That's good.
And obviously, before casting any sort of vote on the policy change, I want to hear from these parents. So I hope that they do take the time to respond to the survey and give their feedback.
On an Alert Now survey like that, does the school committee get that?
I can add to that.
Do we get to have a vote?
Sure. You'll have a public vote.
Obviously, the Alert Now will go to households, but it'll be up on the web. I'd like to hear from students and parents and anyone in the community.
Absolutely. We really need to hear from the community, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Vale. All right. I hope everyone has a wonderful summer. We will, as we normally do, not be meeting now until August 31st, 2011. And then September 14th will be our next meeting after that. So school will have started on August 31st.
August 30th, the school opens for grades 1 through 12.
Okay, so it'll be hard to believe that we're there when we come back. But anyway. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? No one ever does, no one ever says those quickly, Mr. Hayes. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Have a wonderful summer, everyone.
Thank you.